Welcome to the Monday, July 17, 2023 session of the Lake Forest City Council. Will the city clerk please call the roll?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor Tack.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Present.
Alderman Notes.
Here.
Alderman Powers.
Here.
Alderman Preschlack.
Here.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Here.
Alderman Weber.
Here.
Alderman Walther.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Will you please all rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, the first item on the agenda is comments by mayor. We have a fairly extensive meeting tonight, so I will try to add very little. The first item is the dialogue contest winner. On the back of the city's summer dialogue newsletter is a "How Well Do You Know?" Lake Forest Bike Path Bridges Contest, where we ask residents to identify these bridges. Before we recognize the winner, we're going to ask the city council members if any of them know the locations of these bridges.
How about if they, who doesn't?
Starting on the left, feel free to just jump in.
Illinois.
Illinois Road.
Middle.
Wisconsin.
Wisconsin.
Right. Excellent. Geniuses. Wow. Yeah, the city replaced the Illinois and Woodland Bridges last year. If you're interested, you can find construction videos on YouTube. We drew one lucky winner from all the correct entrants. The winner is?
Sharon Reed.
Is Sharon here? No. Well, congratulations, Sharon. You've won some Lake Forest swag. Pick up your prize at City Hall. Thank you. Next, I'd like to introduce Chief of Police Carl Waldorf. We will be swearing in Deputy Chief Michael Lang.
Thank you very much. I know you have a full agenda tonight, so we'll move as quickly as we can. If I could, I'd like to say a couple of things about Mike. Mike started with us in 2004 after graduating from the University of Wisconsin and working several years as a correctional officer at a prison in Wisconsin. There's some several jokes I penciled in there that I'm going to delete. They kind of write themselves, so you can work yourself through that. As an officer, Mike volunteered to be a field training officer with us and a firearms instructor. He's been a sergeant and a commander with us for 11 years, and in that capacity, he's run several of our most important programs, including our field training program, our Citizens Police Academy, and I know several of you were in there when Mike was in charge, and continues to function as our department range master. Most recently, he spent several years as our detective commander in charge of our detectives and SROs and our social worker, who's here. Mike has a master's degree in forensic psychology from the Chicago School of Professional Psychiatry. He has been a professor of criminal justice at Carthage College since 2010. Currently, Mike serves as the team commander for the Lake County Incident Management Assistance Team, which is a group of experienced police supervisors from throughout Lake County who respond to emergencies in our member agencies and help them manage crisis. And in this capacity, Mike responded to Highland Park last July 4, and Mike and his team worked with them several weeks to help bring some order out of what was probably the most significant police incident in Lake County history. So with that, I'll ask Mike to step through and be sworn in by Mayor Tack, and then his family will step up to pin him.
All right. Please raise your right hand. Aye.
Aye.
Michael Lang.
Michael Lang.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The constitutions of the United States.
The constitutions of the United States.
And the state of Illinois.
And the state of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce the laws of the state of Illinois.
And will diligently enforce the laws of the state of Illinois.
And the city of Lake Forest.
And the city of Lake Forest.
And that I will faithfully execute the duties of Deputy Chief.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of Deputy Chief.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
Congratulations. Thank you very much. Next item is comments by city manager.
Mr. Mayor, I am pleased to say I have no report this evening, but I will pause for one minute for those in the audience who'd like to leave before we begin with the rest of the meeting.
Who would possibly want to leave? Okay, moving on. The next item is the opportunity for public comment on non-agenda items. Seeing none, we will move on to committee reports, and the first report is from the Finance Committee. And the first item, I guess, is I am to ask for a motion to open the public hearing on the city's annual appropriation ordinance.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
May I have a roll call vote?
Certainly. Alderman Walther.
Yes.
Alderman Novit.
Yeah.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay.
Okay, the motion is approved. Is there a public comment on the Finance Committee report? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote again.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman, I'm sorry, Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Okay, the next item is consideration of the annual appropriation ordinance for fiscal year 2024 and approval of rollovers presented by Elizabeth Hile, Finance Director.
Thank you, Mayor Tack. I know that's impossible to see, but that's included in your packet. As noted at the June 20 meeting, when the city council granted first reading to the appropriation ordinance, although the city adopts an annual budget and approves a comprehensive fiscal plan, the appropriation ordinance is the legal mechanism for approving and authorizing the expenditure of public funds. That appropriation ordinance is required to be approved and filed with the county clerk by the end of the first fiscal quarter of the year, which is July 31 for the city. The appropriation ordinance worksheet that is here on the screen really just provides you a roadmap between the budget that you approved in April and the final appropriation ordinance presented for approval this evening, because they aren't consistent. And so you start out with the first column, which is the approved budget from April by fund of the city, and then we have certain deductions from that, which includes the debt service funds, because the authorization to expend for debt service funds is the bond ordinance approved when you issued the bonds. So we deduct that from the appropriate, for the appropriation ordinance. The rollovers are included, a detailed list provided in your packet. Rollovers are items that were appropriated and budgeted in fiscal year 23 that were either not started or not completed in fiscal year 23. So the applicable department is requesting a rollover of the amounts remaining for that particular expenditure. So you have the detail by amount, by vendor, and by project for the rollovers that are being requested by the departments. And then you have the library. The library is not included in the city's approved budget, but because they're a component unit of the city, they're included in the appropriation ordinance for approval. And then you have also the school district 67, which does not recognize the appropriation ordinance, but by charter are required to be included in their appropriation ordinance. So those numbers are included as well. In addition, you see a column called the contingency. The city has historically approved 10% of the subtotal per fund as a contingency amount, allowing for the city council to approve expenditures of public funds that were not anticipated in the approved budget. This contingency amount is not available to staff. We administer to the subtotal that you see, third column from the right. But that contingency allows you throughout the year as a city council to approve unbudgeted expenditures based on unanticipated events. So that is included in the appropriations ordinance, bringing us to the final total for the appropriation ordinance by fund, and that total is then provided in the appropriation ordinance, included in your packet and for your consideration this evening. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions from the council? Hearing none. Are there any public comments on the presentation? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the final reading of the ordinance and the rollovers?
So moved.
Second.
A roll call vote, please.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
The next item is the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award presentation, and this will be presented by Jim Preschlack, Finance Committee Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So 44th consecutive year that our finance department has won this award. They're like the New York Yankees of, you know, financial reporting for municipal government in Illinois.
Or used to be, depending.
Yeah, well, historically, I'm going way back. So just really amazing, and we have a great staff and leaders, and this award is given to approximately 5% of the towns and the cities in Illinois for excellence and best-in-class financial reporting. And Diane Hall is the Assistant Finance Chair or Director, and she is going to be presented with the award. Diane has done just almost everything, I think, in the last five years. I was so impressed with the whole team, but Diane, I always have to mention this whenever I can, played an integral role in the ERP system and project that was implemented in 2019, something like that. And in public and in private, they're always usually over budget and behind schedule. Ours was under budget and early, and a lot of that underpinnings, all the work that she did, helps with the reporting. And so thank you very much for that, and have an award here for you. We're going to get a little photo up.
Truly remarkable stuff. Next item is items for omnibus vote consideration. There are 11 items. If there's any item that you would like to have removed or taken separately, please let me know.
I do. I have an edit to the minutes from last meeting.
Okay.
Page 37, under the, pardon me. It states, under comments by mayor, council action. It says Alderman Gashgarian, I'm sorry, that's not the right one. I'm sorry. Under council action approval of 14 omnibus. There's one that says Alderman Notes. Let's see which line is this? Yeah, thanks, Julie.
Page 37, under council action approved first reading of the fiscal year 2024 appropriation ordinance. This is the minutes from the last meeting. It should, it says Alderman Notes made a motion to approve the mayor's appointment of First Ward Alderman. That's a typo.
Thank you.
It should be Alderman Notes made a motion to approve the fiscal year 2024 appropriation ordinance.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big difference.
I wish she did both.
All right, so the process at this point for amending the minutes is?
You could, if everybody is agreeable to the change, read everything out, and then the motion to approve the omnibus would be as amended for those minutes.
Okay.
But it could still be approved altogether.
Okay. So nothing else needs to be said about page 37. Okay. Very good. Thank you. And the items are, as amended. Number one, approval of the June 5, 2023 city council meeting minutes. Number two, approval of the check register for the period of May 27 through June 23, 2023. Number three, approval of an additional two-year professional services agreement with automated merchant systems to provide credit card processing services. Number four, approve the purchase of three dual-band portable radios and updating 26 department-owned dual-band capable portable radios for the fire department from state bid vendor Motorola Solutions in the total amount of $124,616.95. Number five, waive the bidding process and authorize the police department to enter into a three-year agreement with Tyler Technologies for the purchase of a replacement adjudication software for a total amount of $87,523. Number six, waive the bidding process and authorize the police department to enter into a five-year contract with Flock Safety for the purchase of 10 license plate recognition cameras for a total amount of $118,250. Number seven, approval of a recommendation from the Public Works Committee to waive the bid process and award purchase for the building maintenance section mobile work van replacement to Fida Freightliner of Cincinnati in the amount of $78,163. Number eight, consideration of an ordinance approving a recommendation from the Historic Preservation Commission, first reading, and if desired by city council, final approval. Nine, consideration of ordinance approving a recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, first reading, and if desired by the city council, final approval. Number 10, consideration of board and commission recommendations related to the athletic field improvements at Deerpath Park. Waive first reading and grant final approval of ordinances. And finally, consideration of a waiver of permit fees associated with an addition and drainage improvements at Cherokee School and a new playground at Sheridan School, approval by motion. Are there any additional items that would, Alderman would like to have pulled out or taken separately? Okay, hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve the 11 omnibus items as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walther.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldeck.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next item is old business. There is none this evening. The next item is new business. First item is consideration of recommendations from the Plan Commission in support of adoption of an update to the comprehensive land use plan as it relates to the Central Business District and establishing priorities for implementation. First reading. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Catherine Cerniak, Director of Community Development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is an opportunity to look back, but also look forward. The comprehensive plan update in its entirety hasn't occurred for 20 years, and so often, the council, the Plan Commission are faced with needing to make a decision on a pending development. This is really an opportunity to really look at our community, feel good about what's there, and feel optimistic and visionary about what's to come. So I'm first going to spend a couple slides just talking about the comprehensive plan in general. Very importantly, what is a comprehensive plan? I know there's been a lot of concern that this comprehensive plan is not detailed enough. A comprehensive plan is a vision. It's very high-level vision. And the first bullet point there, I think, is really important. It's a chance to step back and really look, and you're going to be able to do that a little bit later in this presentation, because we all drive through the Central Business District. We all walk down the street, and I think the working group really found that taking a walking tour really helped you to see things differently, see things that you might see every day and not really think through the opportunities, the success, or the challenge. Comprehensive plan is a forward-looking document. As I said, it establishes a vision, really is intended as a starting point, a jumping-off point, so to speak. It's not a roadmap for how things are going to happen. It is that high-level vision to get excited about, and ideally, the comprehensive plan is an inspirational document, as nerdy as that sounds. For people who are into planning, it really is exciting to think about our community in a different way. The comprehensive plan is not a regulatory tool. It is not the zoning code. It neither directs what needs to happen on a property nor prohibits anything. It really is a vision that allows some flexibility and allows a variety of interests to come together as the plan is implemented, to decide exactly what's going to happen. The plan is not a funding mechanism. Any piece of this, whether it's a follow-up study, whether it's development of parameters, will come back to the city council with a request for a decision on funding. The comprehensive plan does not circumvent the board and commission processes. The Plan Commission was involved in developing this draft, but the comprehensive plan does not allow any project to move forward without the ordinary processes. The city council may choose to implement a special process or an ad hoc committee, but even with that, such as with the redevelopment of the former municipal services site, there was an ad hoc committee established. That committee established development parameters, which then led the city to go out for a request for proposal, and once that developer was selected, that project went back before the Plan Commission and, in that case, the Building Review Board. So the comprehensive plan, again, a vision takes us forward, but doesn't negate all of our public processes, the opportunity for public engagement. Again, looking back, the process to date, just prior to COVID, the city council, after the Plan Commission review and after a working groups, group did the study and prepared a draft, the city council approved the Seddler Square-Wokeyeen Road Business District Chapter and also approved the Route 60 corridor chapter. The chapter in front of you tonight, for consideration, focuses on the Central Business District. Yet to come is the Housing Chapter, which will look broadly at housing types throughout the community and geographically in different locations. We'll really assess what buildable land do we have left? What is our inventory? How many single-family homes? How many acre-and-a-half lots? How many half-acre lots? That's yet to come. Once that chapter is completed, there will be a compilation of all of the chapters, and there will be wordsmithing, and there will be consistency brought throughout the chapters. We will put this document into a digital form, and that, too, will come back in its entirety before the Plan Commission for additional input and ultimately back to the city council for overall approval. So with that background, tonight, you're focused on the Central Business District, which is, again, a chapter of the comprehensive plan. This comes to you with you, a recommendation of five to zero from the Plan Commission, but importantly, a working group appointed by the city manager began this process and advised staff and our city and our consultant, Teskin Associates, in drafting the chapter. That working group was put together as working groups before it to really bring in people with different interests, with different areas of expertise, and with different perspectives. I won't read the names, but they are there before you. The working group, as I mentioned, started its work by walking around the business district. And we probably spent about an hour and a half doing that, pointing out different areas, having discussions, and after that, there was an extensive public engagement process. The public engagement process for the Central Business District study exceeded any public process that we've had to date for the chapters of the comprehensive plan. There were individual interviews. There were focus groups. There was a project website that offered the opportunity to comment on a map and to read others' comments and to respond. There was a poll, an interactive poll, that was available both online and in hard copy. A postcard was mailed to every address in the community announcing both the availability of the website as well as a workshop that was held at Gorton Community Center. Again, you just see some numbers there that give an indication of the attempted outreach and the breadth of the feedback that the working group considered in refining and moving the draft forward. Just a few quick points. A very, very high percentage, 92% of the respondents to the poll agreed that the Central Business District was really integral to the community, a defining characteristic. More than half, more than half agreed that it was appropriate to re-envision, give some consideration to the Central Business District. 76% felt that the Central Business District should be maintained in its current size, current geographic location. There was no interest in expanding the Central Business District east across the railroad tracks or expanding it into the neighborhood, and in fact, there was instead a very strong interest in assuring that transitions between the Central Business District and those adjacent residential neighborhoods was carefully planned, and a great deal of attention was paid to it. Interestingly, the, there was a split on whether or not additional residential should be added to the Central Business District in and around the Central Business District. However, both the working group and the Plan Commission acknowledged that there's a real demand. There's been real interest for residential near our Central Business District. Kelm Scott Park was recently developed with 110 units. We have the McKinley condominiums that have sold out in every case before they are developed. I can tell you that just today, I received two calls from residents in other communities, nearby communities, who are interested in coming into Lake Forest and asking about the availability of condominiums. So the interest is there, and historically, we know that about 100 residential units were lost. And historically, we know that about 100 residential units were lost. Over time, all of the second-floor spaces above the businesses in the Central Business District used to be residences of varying quality, but over time, those were all converted to offices. So both the Plan Commission and the working group did feel that considering additional residential in the vicinity of the Central Business District was important, particularly now that we know that retail alone cannot be relied on to sustain the Central Business District. Looking back, what is interesting is that the vision, the themes, the goals that were identified in the 1998 comprehensive plan for the Central Business District, again, in 2000, when there was both a character study done and an ad hoc Central Business District Task Force formed, and again, in 2009, when, again, there was a Central Business District Task Force formed, the vision really has remained the same. Preserve and strengthen came out in all of those documents, in all of those conversations, all of those reports. Promoting vitality, assuring comfort and convenience in our Central Business District, assuring that new development is consistent with the historic character. We know over time, in decades past, perhaps, not all of the development that has occurred has been consistent with that historic character. And there may be opportunities presented by some of those existing buildings or sites. There was discussion in the past about consolidating specialty retail in the core, around Market Square, to assure that as people would come to shop, that there'd be the opportunity to move from store to store and encourage people to stop perhaps in more locations than they had originally planned. And consistently through those years, there's been discussion and encouragement to bring additional residential into the Central Business District. The vision as presented to you tonight in the draft chapter, again, really repeats that. It talks about enhancing. It talks about preserving. And there was some discussion, and in fact, some criticism, that the first sentence or the first line of the vision is a negative. But the working group really felt strongly that, again and again, throughout the public process, we heard comments, "Don't change." And it wasn't, "Don't change anything," but "Don't change the character. Don't change. Don't lose the distinctiveness. Make sure the Central Business District remains the gem that it is." So working through the working group and the Plan Commission, there really was interest in retaining that first line. Looking forward, the vision is not to change the Central Business District into something different, something more akin to other business districts. So that's why that negative statement, somewhat unusual for a vision statement, but we heard that strongly. Some early observations of the working group. And I will note that the working group initially focused on opportunities, on areas that really presented buildings that perhaps had served their appropriate lifetime. But in hearing the comments from the public, this document instead really starts out with the whole discussion of preserving. My sense was that initially, the working group just assumed that the character would be preserved, assumed that Market Square would be preserved. But based on that public feedback, the document, as you see it today, focuses on preservation. The working group identified that there are distinct areas in the Central Business District, that there is the core, that there is what has come to be termed now as the inner ring, that area just outside the core, and then important neighborhood districts that really provide for daily needs. The working group identified some street corridors and streetscapes, both running north and south and east and west. And in particular, identified Bank Lane, which, again, is a topic that came out repeatedly in 2000 and 2009 as an opportunity for the city, perhaps, to lead with investment, to assure that we are providing the necessary infrastructure to incent private investment. As I mentioned, both the working group and Plan Commission identified the importance of transitions, those areas where we do have a Central Business District that abuts single-family residential neighborhoods or multifamily residential neighborhoods. And that provides some vitality. It provides synergy. But there's also some sensitivity that needs to come with that. Again, both groups, the working group and the Plan Commission, recognized the untouchables. There was no discussion about changing Market Square, but certainly enhancing it, investing in it, and making sure that it lives long into the future. Pedestrian connections were talked about, making sure that we get people from parking areas to where we want them to be, to provide intriguing opportunities to walk through and visit a new place or perhaps even to see some surprises. The groups acknowledged that there are well-used gathering areas. In fact, the night that we did the walking tour, there was a concert in Market Square. So it was a great opportunity for the working group to wander through Market Square, seeing that activity in real time. And both the working group and Plan Commission recognized that, even though we have a spectacular Central Business District, there are opportunities for improvement. So just reviewing, the core is Westminster to Deer Path, Western Avenue to Forest, and really is that area that needs to be preserved and cared for. The inner ring provides a great deal of opportunity. Again, this is a location where we are likely to see some interest in development and an area where it may behoove the city to establish some parameters, establish some guidelines, again, much as we did with Laurel Avenue, to set realistic expectations for property owners, for developers, for the boards and commissions who will review those petitions as they come forward, and for the residents. And to do that through an appropriate public process involving appropriate boards and commissions. And then the neighborhood business districts at the far north end of Western Avenue, closer in along Western Avenue, Jewel, the Fresh Market, and then at the south end of Western Avenue. Those perhaps have a different character, or definitely have a different character than Market Square, but they meet daily needs. They are a vital part of our district and they really help meet residents' needs without having to go outside our community. At the mayor's suggestion, we wanted to take the council on a little walk. Again, because there is a difference in how you look at something. I will say this is four minutes and nine seconds. That's one minute and nine seconds longer than I told the city manager it would be, but he won't notice. And in cutting this down, there are some areas where perhaps we're moving a little quickly, but we wanted to fit as much in. We are gonna start at Vine, and we're gonna take a quick overview and go to Wisconsin. Then we're gonna come back and go block by block, a quick shoot of each block, and then looking a little bit more closely at a few images on each block. And then, once we're all the way down at Wisconsin Avenue, we're gonna zoom back to Vine. Again, starting at Vine, moving toward the 222 building at the north end. And now we're back at Vine. Looking at how the two sides of the street interact with each other, condominiums on the west, the back of house essentially on the right. Looking a bit more closely, again, Bank Lane serves as both a service and trash pickup corridor. Some areas of opportunity as we move toward Illinois Road. And some of the magnificent areas, whether it's landscaping, architecture, hardscape, and compare that perhaps to some other areas. Illinois to Deer Path. And we're gonna move quickly back. And you see, again, some comparison across the street. Perhaps some of you see some opportunities as we move along Bank Lane. Some wide-open surface parking lots, some buildings that are no longer used in their entirety for the uses intended originally. And now Deer Path to Market Square. Again, used as a delivery and trash pickup area. During COVID, we came up with some spontaneous on-street parking. Narrow sidewalks that make it difficult for people to go past. Some landscaping that is exquisite and some perhaps less so. The incongruence of some really elegant areas with some trash areas. Are there opportunities to look at other options? Some unique places that some people are surprised when they come upon. Courtyards, pedestrian corridors. And now we're moving from Market Square north to Westminster. Again, a mix of areas that are landscaped, perhaps not used to their full potential. This is the north Market Square courtyard. Again, opportunities, large spaces, underutilized spaces, surface areas that perhaps could be beer gardens. Lake Forest Bank and Trust, again, an example of landscaping and perhaps what could be. And now moving from Westminster to the focal point at the end, the 222 building with the city-owned parking lot on the west side of the street. And again, are there opportunities? Do all of the existing buildings really help to create that character that so many treasure about the Central Business District? Large areas, large surface parking areas. Wider sidewalks, but perhaps some opportunity. Unique aspect of Bank Lane with the focal point at the north end. Some new energy with Hometown Coffee. We know that outdoor gathering spaces are really desired. Some areas where there's existing grade change. And just a quick overview. The purpose of that was just to inspire, perhaps excite, and really really get the juices flowing about what this plan could lead to. Again, the plan isn't a roadmap. It doesn't tell us how to get there. But it just talks about where we might go. So if you choose to do so tonight, you have an ordinance in front of you which would adopt the chapter. And importantly, you are adopting this chapter in the form as substantially recommended by the Plan Commission. We know there's wordsmithing. We know there's photos. We know there's maps. As all the chapters are completed and we compile this document, we will be doing a lot of work. It will all come back to you. And if you choose to do so, a motion identifying priorities as recommended by the Plan Commission. Infrastructure, really evaluating infrastructure, maintaining it, being innovative, and perhaps thinking about how the city investing in infrastructure can really be a leader in continuing to encourage private property owners to invest. The Plan Commission recommended Bank Lane as a priority. Why is there so much detail about Bank Lane in this plan? Because it's something real and it's something the city has control of. We can look at things like wider sidewalks or curbless sidewalks or redirecting the traffic flow or changing the parking configuration or perhaps installing bollards on certain blocks so that on a Friday or Saturday night, we can raise those bollards, close a block off to traffic, and allow restaurants to line that street that can then spill out into Bank Lane. The third priority was, and perhaps this is a little bit longer term, but looking at the inner ring and thinking about particular sites. City has control over some of those sites, and we don't have control over others, but the city can lead by developing parameters and developing design guidelines. Again, all of these would involve a public process, and all of these would involve various boards and commissions. So if you choose to do so, there's action for you to take, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Are there specific questions for Kathy?
Thank you, Mayor Tac. First, Kathy, thank you so much. And, Mr. Mayor, for you and your supporting working group on all the efforts for this. Just a couple things. One, I was taken a little bit aback by that negative statement in the vision statement. I feel, you know, sometimes the vision statement, and I've read a lot of comments that you've both provided through email and others, you know, taking that a little bit more concise, edited down. But I appreciate the effort that those have put in, and I appreciate your comments tonight on how that was developed. So I'm not necessarily asking for a change to be made. For someone who walks down Bank Lane, exposed to Bank Lane all day long, seven days a week, Bank Lane is a service road. I mean, there are deliveries to those businesses all times of day. And I think we need to just be very mindful of how the businesses will operate in the future as we come up with design parameters and looking at changes to that road because there's a lot of truck traffic. And I think we still need to maintain that because where else are they gonna go? And those businesses need those deliveries on time. So just a couple of comments, but I think a lot of effort has gone into this, and it's a nice start.
I have a comment. First off, Director Cerniak, thank you very much for the work that you've put in on this. You and your staff have put a great deal of time and effort into this. And by extension, I wanted to take the CBD advisory, thank the advisory group as well as the TESCA group, and really all the input that the residents have put in on this, positive and negative. And I think all of your comments have been heard. And we have read all of your comments and have taken them to heart. This, to me, seems like, again, wordsmithing aside, I wouldn't disagree with you. The basic context of this is moving forward. And I think sort of a broader look with this, I think you and I had used the term, sort of a springboard effect. And I think this is leading us definitely in the right direction. And certainly, it will present opportunities in the future. And I think that, you know, we're going in the right direction with this. I feel very, very comfortable with it. I know that we have some citizen input that I'd love to hear, but, you know, I want to thank everybody for their participation. And I think this is really sort of moving us together, you know, for the future of the town. And again, maintaining the historic relevance and character and charm of our community. So thank you very much for your work.
Other comments? Alderman, welcome.
Thank you. There are a couple terms used in the document that were capitalized, such as design guidelines, development parameters, character guidelines. And then, as I looked through the document to try to find a kind of a very concise definition for those terms, I did not find one. And might suggest, as part of the compilation of all of the chapters, that a glossary be added of some of these terms that stand out as being capitalized or otherwise very important, not only to our future planning, but important to the citizens who contributed comments along the way, that those terms be defined. A number of our citizens also expressed comments of, this came about when we heard comments regarding design parameters and character parameters and so forth, that there should be a process defined. And, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, I've had the opportunity to sit on a couple different commissions and ad hoc committees that looked at development in the Route 60 corridor and Deer Path Road. And one of the interesting things that came to me through all of those ad hoc committees was the extreme care all of the members of those committees took to look at what preceded us, to look at the history of those areas, and really take humbrage of the processes that led to the development of those previous studies. And so I don't necessarily think that we need to define the process. And so I don't necessarily think that we need to define the process because we will hold public meetings, we will rely on our boards and commissions, we will rely on public input as we develop those. But just for our own edification and that of the public, that those processes will be consistent with how we've done all the previous types of ad hoc committees.
Okay. Alderman, notes?
Thank you, Mayor. Kathy, picking up on one of the comments you made about pictures and some of our offline discussion and to a degree addressing Alderman Walther's points about definitions. Are you planning on using these pictures that are being added to help maybe provide some context? You know, I think back over the last two years, the conversation that the term "big box" is being thrown out. And I think if we had pictures that were suggestive of what intentions and what are positive and negative examples around town might help address some of the definitional matters that Alderman Walther's may have identified. I know we're not trying to, not to use the term "box us in", but maybe alleviate some of those concerns about intentions and perspectives.
I think in the past, we've seen that be difficult. So what you see in the documents so far and what you'll continue to see are really images of what's already here in Lake Forest. I think as we, and the working group did try, and we did it with Laurel Avenue, we tried to pull examples, and I'll say parking structure as one. The notion that a parking structure can be designed to be consistent with the character of a particular community. When we show pictures of parking structures from other communities that were designed for those communities, the immediate reaction is, "Not in Lake Forest." And I think we saw that with Laurel Avenue. So I think if we're going to create images, and I would suggest that they not be included in this chapter, but instead, as we go through a planning process, that if we can create some images on our own, working with appropriate professionals, working with boards and commissions, we may perhaps avoid a very negative immediate reaction. And Mr. Mayor, I know you have perhaps some thoughts about that as well.
Well, I do. And so perhaps the reason that the document starts with a negative is because one of the things we discovered through the process was that it was most important to many people to assure them of what we weren't doing, which is an awkward starting point, but the, those who initially chose to participate in public comment, I'm going to just give a statistic. I would say 80% of the public comment was a negative. "Don't do this. We don't need X. We don't want Y." And there was a push for specifics, but in part, what we realized in looking at this was anytime we came up with anything even remotely close to a specific, it was always, to some extent, used against us. I don't like that. And, you know, we don't own the buildings, the businesses. What we're trying to do is create enthusiasm for respectful redevelopment that's consistent with the character of the Central Business District. That's how we perceive our job. Because whether we like it or not, redevelopment is going to happen. So our role is to shepherd the process and encourage people to do things that reflect what the community as a whole is looking for, would like to see in Lake Forest in the future. And what people, what we know is what people want to see in the future is much of what's already here, but they want to see other things that enhance and add to that. And so that's why this is a somewhat generic aspirational document and not a prescription for an outcome. So did I address that adequately? Okay. Any other comments? Alderman, no but.
In reviewing this, I was initially struck by how vague it felt. And what I wanted to see were specifics, and this is not the vehicle for that. And I understand that. And probably the biggest frustration, frankly, that I have with it is that we have to rely on the people who own the property, who are developing the property, who are sitting on the boards and commissions. And I think that's where the review process comes in. And that's the only place the review process can come in.
And I would add that your third priority up there, recommended priority, is to focus on the inner rings. So there is the opportunity for the city to provide more structure as we move forward from this plan. So it, and that structure can be in the form of guidelines, design parameters, and we can work with property owners, work with developers. Sometimes we can even do some preapprovals to assist a property owner or developer in achieving the right match. So I wouldn't say the city can't do anything to guide private property. We certainly do. We have our zoning code, we have our boards and commissions. And again, in the case of Laurel Avenue, we had a very, it was a city property, but when we sought a developer, it was for some very specific, it was based on some very specific requirements.
Probably not being clear, what I'm, what, I think what we have to understand is that we don't own all of this. And what we can control, we can, but we can't control all of it. And it's a really hard thing to accept when you want, you want the developers or whomever is doing the building to say, "Oh, I get it. I'm going to put gingerbread on this roofline because it'll look better than a non-embellished building." I don't know how much we can do to make that happen if that's something that's determined to be desirable. How much, this isn't, how much of the Central Business District is in the historic preservation? Is overseen by the Historic Preservation Council, Commission, sorry.
Market Square and from Deer Path to Westminster is generally, and then to Oakwood.
Okay, but not all of it, is it?
No, not the entire Central Business District.
Okay. So no matter what, there's going to be development that's proposed that isn't going to be under the purview of the HBC?
And throughout the city, any development that is not under the purview of the Historic Preservation Commission, not in one of our historic districts, not a local landmark, there is a different review process. It is the Building Review Board. And likely, most redevelopment would also go before the Plan Commission. And again, there is the opportunity for the council to give us direction to provide some further development parameters and guidelines. I, I think that Lake Forest is intriguing and even some of what you saw there, because there is some difference. I don't think we, the city should or can be in a role of saying, "Here's a blueprint for a building. Here's what we want you to build."
Agreed. And that's, I think, where people get concerned. But it's the reality. It's, we can control what we can control and we can advise the way we can and we can use the BRB, or you know, BRB can speak up, HBC can speak up. But, but people are going to do, are going to develop the way that works for their project or for what, and I'm being very vague and I apologize. I just think we have to, we have to kind of go with that. Am I missing the point?
The process, our review processes are not perfect. But I would argue that because of our review processes, Building Review Board, which was one of the first in the country put in place in 1960, because of our review processes, this community is something special.
Agreed.
And those processes will, are not circumvented by this plan. And I will quote former Mayor Lansing, as I often do, "Lake Forest did not happen by accident." And there's nothing in this plan that throws everything out and allows a free-for-all.
Good. That's, I guess, what I'm trying to make clear. Thank you.
Alderman Preschlag.
Yeah, I would just comment on that and piggyback on Kathy's comments. I mean, the reality is that, and I'm hearkened that we have to rely on our boards and commissions and our processes that have served the community well. Even especially, you know, given the Central Business District. I was on the HBC for six years. And if you see the before and after on North Market Square, I mean, if you just put those pictures up, I mean, it was a home run, you know? And we went through there, there was exposed wires and utilities and it was totally underused space. And, you know, you look at it now and it's just, you know, it's a massive, massive success. And I think, you know, the people in the processes on our two architectural review boards and the Plan Commission, the ZBA, they just do a great job historically of balancing these competing interests. And I think it's really important to have that dialogue at the petition level. So you have your ordinances that are, you know, restrictive and you have this comprehensive plan that we dust off, you know, every five to 10 years in different portions of our community, but it sets the stage. It's a strategic intent. And then the boards and commissions work well, you know? When our neighbors, and there's been people that have served here on these, they go to the sites, they read the blueprints, they listen to the neighbors, they adjudicate the issues. And I have great faith in that. And, I mean, just to give you an example, when I was on HBC, there was a petition that put a Dunkin' Donuts drive-through on the train station. I mean, and the Preservation Foundation did an amazing job of raising money, restoring it all. And that wasn't taken, considered seriously. We, I mean, I was on the HBC. We're, so we do it well. And we need, and our job is to support, recruit, cheerlead the process and actually communicate our faith in it because we've seen it play out over generations. So I'm really hearkened that the Plan Commission voted 5-0. They've done the work, you know? And so I'm in full support of it. And I think there's more to come in terms of how we proceed and, you know, in terms of subcommittees. And we always do this well. That's my opinion.
Can I just, just to complete that thought? I totally agree. And that's my point, is that we are going to be relying heavily on the people who are on these boards and commissions. That's all. That's really where the teeth are in this. This is a great guideline, but it's not specific and it can't be, and I understand that. But we have to rely on the boards and commissions that are going to be doing the due diligence and getting into the weeds on all this and making sure that things, that we are able to implement the charm and the quirkiness and all the wonderful vibe things that are implicit in this guide, that it actually happens that way. That's all.
It's happened for a long, long, long time in our community.
Yeah.
Are there other comments?
Yeah. To Jim's point, I think that's, that's the reassurance I have. There's very few things, I can't even think of one, where it hasn't worked in this community. I mean, go, I mean, you can go back decades, but you think about big projects like the beach. You think about some of the newer things we're doing now. And I know, and I know there's opinions on all fronts, whether, you know, Deer Path Park is going to really be what we all want it to be, right? I'm very hopeful that it will and I think it'll exceed expectations. But, but our city works and our boards and commissions work and they are loaded with talented people. And we have a fantastic staff that gives everybody the appropriate guidance. And I think, I think we stay the course with what has really brought us all to where we are today. So thanks for your hard work and everybody else that's already been mentioned. It's teamwork that's going to pull it all together. And 20 years from now, we're all going to be, I think, very appreciative of that process still being very effective.
The only thing that I would have to add, Mr. Mayor, is that when I look at it, I look at it in the form that it's a vision. That's all that it is. It's a blueprint for going forward. And to me, it's a vision that's long overdue in this community for these areas. And I applaud the commission, the people who are on it. They have some good ideas, maybe not all the right ideas, maybe it needs tweaking. But we have the committees, the standing committees of BRB and HBC that'll make sure that there's no changes in any of those ordinances or any of those specifics. So I, again, I think it's a vision that is long overdue. And we have the opportunity to build upon what is good in Lake Forest for a long time. And I think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Because I can, I'm going to make one last comment about Bank Lane in particular and why it is that we emphasize it so much. It is because of some of what Alderman Weber addressed. It is an incredibly sort of functional, for lack of a better term, almost blue-collar space. And yet it takes us from the Deer Path Inn where we have visitors from all over the world who then walk down Bank Lane to Market Square. And sometimes, as you take that walk, you wonder why anybody takes that walk because it's very industrial. And industrial spaces can be made to be functional and beautiful and elegant if the right approach is taken to them. That also happens to be the space that we have control over. And if we, through the boards and commissions and the city council, come up with a plan to redevelop the streetscape, to make it something that you want to walk down, to make it something that comes alive in the evening when the garbage trucks are gone, I think that's our greatest opportunity to influence what other people, developers and building owners, then do. And that's what this document tries to set up and that's what we are trying to set up. And that's one of the reasons why we gave you the virtual tour of Bank Lane because I think when you take it, you say, "You know what? That can be a lot better than it is." And now it's, it's an opportunity to create a vision for what takes us from what it is to where we want it to be. That being said, time has come for public comment. I have one that has been submitted, but I'm not going to limit it to that. So after Brian Norton addresses us, we'll ask for additional comments. Thank you. Please give your name and your address.
Certainly. My name is Brian Norton. I'm here on behalf of the Lake Forest Preservation Foundation. I live at 90 East Woodland Road, right across from West Park. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I do want to add my thanks to those who've made already, to the ad hoc committee that you led, Mr. Mayor, to the Plan Commission for the work they did, to Kathy and the city staff that did a wonderful job putting the plan together. And indeed, there's much we can embrace in this plan. We talked, heard today so much about preservation. That's certainly something that we're focused on, is preservation. I gave you the written submission. I'm not going to read it into the record, I just want to sort of hit the highlights. But one I want to focus on based on the comments, and I very much appreciate what's been said about how effective our commissions and committees are, because they are very effective. Lake Forest exists the way it does and is preserved the way it is because of those commissions and because of the preservation statutes that we've had long before other communities had them, back to 1998. Because of those places, Lake Forest is what it is. So it's imperative that we continue to support the commissions. And a very important question was asked, and that is, what can, what can we control and what can we not control? What's beyond our control and what we can control? And you can control more than you think you can control in one simple respect. If you look at the protections that currently exist, and there are protections that currently exist because much of the town, the core and the inner ring, both the downtown, the central downtown area, are part of the historic district. The parking lots on the back of you over here are part of the historic district. They are subject to 17 standards. There is protection to ensure that something isn't built there that's going to detract from the core, which is only 30 feet away, because the 17 standards protect it. The parking lot over here, on the other hand, is not. Something could be built there that isn't consistent with the historic character of Lake Forest. Likewise, for the corridor that goes from Deer Path down to the Deer Path Inn, that's not protected by the historic district. That could be developed in a way that is unsympathetic to the historic character of Lake Forest. One solution that we propose that you could consider is you can expand the Lake Forest Historic District. And I don't suggest we expand it to the entire Central Business District, but there are strategic parts of the district that could be expanded to to ensure that 17 standards apply to them as well. And that would give you the protection, the ability to ensure that you're not going to have something built that's beyond your control. So one suggestion we had made in our proposal was, is it possible you could expand this in the historic district? I'm not suggesting the entire inner ring and all the way up, but certainly strategic spots that would ensure that the core and the central district are preserved. That's another point we wanted to focus on. And Kathy had mentioned, and it's certainly true, that there is, you know, more development possibilities in the inner ring. But we don't view the inner ring as being completely different than the core because what you do in the inner ring is going to affect the core. You're not going to preserve the core if you do not ensure that the inner ring also is built in a way that's consistent with the core. I use the parking lots behind us over here, they're 30 feet away. I use the parking lots behind us over here, they're 30 feet away from the core. If you put, you know, buildings that are unsympathetic to that historic district, you're gonna detract from the core. So you have to be mindful of that when we go forward. The other thing I want to focus on, and you have already touched upon it, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but I appreciate everyone talking about the process. And indeed, the plan here does not have details in there about how the process is going to be done, and perhaps it's impossible at this point to do so. But I think it is important that we recognize that it will be a public process that's gonna be happening, and people have an input in it, because we do want to avoid any surprises, and we want to set proper expectations for the community to ensure that everyone feels that they've had a voice in the process. We would suggest, and we suggested it here, that because this deals with planning, that the HPC, which has the powers under the statute to do this sort of thing, would be the body by which you could, in fact, go forward with some design parameters to the extent that you're gonna go beyond the, the historic district, because we already have design parameters for the historic district, there's the 17 standards. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Are there others who would like to address the council?
Mayor, my name is Marina Perrier. I live at 485 Oakwood, D1. Certainly, the conversation about Bank Lane is pertinent to us, because that's our driveway as we come in and out. Bank Lane is integral to our ingress and egress. So anything that could be done to make it more attractive and safer would be appreciated. But I think, as a person that works in the Central Business District, the thing that I don't see contemplated in here is parking for scooters and bicycles. And the scooter problem is out of control, and the Central Business District, if you're going to be widening sidewalks to nine feet, as is indicated here, or contemplated here, that will give much more room for more people in motorized vehicles and pedestrians, and it's a nightmare. You can't come out of these buildings without being assaulted. So, something needs to be done to maybe make those Central Business District walking streets non-motorized, other than wheelchairs.
I appreciate your input, and I will say that relative to the scooters, we are beginning an educational campaign specifically directed toward that, and so, your input is well taken.
I might just say, when we were growing up here, you couldn't ride a bike, swear.
No way.
Well, technically, you, technically, you still can't.
You'd get a ticket for that.
Yeah. No education needed. It was just how...
Thank you.
We all have little plates, you know? Anyway. My name's Laura Luce, and I live at 111 Ridge Lane in Lake Forest, which, a buttseye in a ring. My house actually happens to be in the historic district, but the parking lot behind me is one of these little carve-outs that sometimes is discussed. But I wanted to say that it sounds like everybody agrees that we need to rely on the boards and commissions, and I agree 100%, but I think it's really important to uphold unanimous decisions of boards and commissions, and not overturn them based on what is sometimes, well, in one case that I can think of, was perceived as the greater good by the city council. So, if we want these boards and commissions to do their job, we have to uphold their decisions. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Are there other comments? Okay. Oh. Okay. Very good.
Like high school passing roads.
All right. So, at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to grant first reading of an ordinance updating the city's comprehensive plan as it related to the Central Business District and establishing implementation priorities as recommended by the Plan Commission.
So moved.
May I have a second?
Someone's...
May I roll a call vote, please?
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Thank you. And the final item of this meeting, are there any additional comments from council members?
Mayor, I, I have a couple of questions, and I was wondering if we could get some staff time here, and thank you for indulging me. Three items. First off, I was wondering if Mike Thomas and/or Byron could come forward, and, you know, we've had a rather weird summer in terms of rain and no rain, and what's kind of weighing heavily on me right now, is where are we in the process for the beach stable, I'm sorry, the bluff stabilization project, and where are we in that process now? Having that pretty heavy rain about two weeks ago, it made me immediately think of the north beach road access, and kind of brought up the antenna for me. Where are we on the, on that?
Yeah. Good evening. So, as we prepare for this project, actually, this morning, we talked with Dave Kraft with Hay and Associates. He did not raise any red flags in terms of recent data with the inclinometers and the other water collection devices that are on the bluff. In terms of preparing for the construction, we also talked to the contractor today. So, there's a lot of moving parts to get ready for that, but one thing, or a couple of things, that's important, is that as we put this together, the project approach and the project schedule really takes into account minimizing impacts to the public. And that's really in a few ways. One of the ways is when the project was designed, we're minimizing the construction from up top, so the top of the bluff, the ring road, the park. So there's very minimal construction that'll be from the top. Also, the schedule itself was built around minimizing impacts to boaters and beachgoers. So, a lot of the construction will be built from the bottom, and you may think initially, all right, that's gonna affect the beach. For the most part, we're hoping to minimize affecting the beach. So, a lot of the staging will be in the south parking lot, and it'll be closer to the bluff. So as of now, it looks like most of the sidewalks will be open during the duration of the construction, minus maybe a few times. And then, we were also able to get creative with the staging and able to actually keep the sidewalk through the boatyard actually open at all times. So that is really important, I think, in terms of minimizing disruption of the community when it comes to that project. In terms of the schedule, we also took that into account. And the reason why we're not working on the project right now is because we're in prime beach season, prime boating season, so that's the reason. I mean, the weather, yes, we've had some rain, but there's been some times that otherwise would be good for construction, but it's really based around minimizing that disruption. So, the schedule right now has us starting after Labor Day, because we know that that's a big holiday weekend. So it'd be starting on September 5th with preparation work. So that would be, basically, there would be a subcontractor that would be doing the necessary tree removal, and that's not just mass tree removal, it's very strategic based off of where they need to stage and where the wall goes. There will be project layout during that time, so there'd be surveying, staking, and there, there would probably be some equipment that would be showing up at that time. All of that work would be coming from the south parking lot in a very small space. So the north parking lot during that week would still be open, and the majority of the south parking lot, which is obviously much bigger, will still be open with the boat, the boat docks and the ramps still open. Going into the next week, September 11th, is when some of the grading activities would begin. We were hoping to push that back a little bit into the year, but looking at the, the schedule with the contractor and not knowing what the winter's gonna look like, it's a little bit of a risk to push that back. So we agreed to start on September 11th, and they would be accessing it from the south parking lot as well. So that way, the week of September 11th, you still have that access on the north parking lot for beachgoers. Going into September 18th would be when there would be some access needed from the north parking lot. I think it's gonna be minimal. We're still waiting for a more specific schedule, but for the most part, we're trying to minimize it to a few weeks on the north parking lot. But then, after September and going into October, November is really when they're gonna be going full bore, hoping that the weather cooperates when they start putting in the foundations and actually erecting the walls. The contractor today stated that he was trying to go as far as he could with completing the project in November and Christmas, and depending on what work is still left, if there's still some wall work, that would continue in the spring, be it February, March, whenever the weather kind of cooperates with the landscape restoration after that. And we've also allotted for some time for our own staff to clean up that area before prime beach season. But the way the contract was written is that the contractor needs to complete everything there by April 1st. And then, that would give the time that I just mentioned to kind of clean up that area prior to Memorial Day weekend. One thing that is important to note that the project currently does not include, is that it does not include the boardwalk, per the previous council action and presentations that we have done. Staff and the parks, or the, the Parks Department, other staff, and the city manager is looking for possible other private donations for that, and it's possible at some point that item may come back to the city council, but as of now, it's not part of the project. And then, in general, as we get closer, so the next month is really when we start sitting down with communications and all the other departments to really gear up for this project. So there, there hasn't been a lot of communication yet, but really, the beginning of August, end of August is when there will be a lot more communication with the project.
Awesome. Thank you. And then, kind of instead of a look forward, a look back, and I was wondering if, I know Chuck is here, this is going back to mayor tax time on council, and we had that north beach access road collapse, and, and council wisely decided to preserve the table, and through generous donations and also city action, we reestablished that north beach road. But Chuck, I remember there was some significant discussion, and even a level of criticism, to be fair, that the plantings that were going to go in there, given the grade, just were not gonna be satisfactory. I'd heard some of my previous colleagues on council very concerned about the ongoing watering, and, and I was down there this, this weekend, and it just dawned on me, it looked great. Are you satisfied, again, taking a look back for three years ago, four years, three years ago? Four years ago? Wow. Are you, are you satisfied with how things have established themselves, and you feel confident that, that bluff, based on the, the plantings, along with the design characteristics, is it performing the way you, you think it should, and you're happy with the results?
Yeah, I would say it is performing exceptionally well. As you recall, a lot of the plant material were native prairie plants, and we're starting to see the maturity of a prairie. It usually takes two to three years for prairie plants to develop into a higher diversity. So this year, we're seeing plants that are higher quality even. So, it is maturing. The first couple of years, we did do some supplemental watering. This year, we did not. Even through the dry period, we let it go. It's a good indicator that the plant material is well-established, it's doing well. We continue to monitor it. We control weeds if they come up, but it has been a great success. You'll notice a few trees, we did plant some smaller trees, some shrubs, some evergreens. Those are doing exceptionally well also. With the exception of a couple of trees, as you're driving down the north beach access road, some of the birch have died, you can see, see that, but as far as any planting goes, the success rate has been extremely high. And the, the planting along the ravine, even better. We're actually considering if we need to trim that back some, it's just growing so well. So, I think it's been an incredible success.
And I think that speaks to the actions of, of council and staff in terms of preserving that asset that we have down there, and, again, addressing the bluff stabilization and mitigating the, the issue that happened four or five years ago with, with the north beach road caving. You know, thank you for the work that you've done. I think it's been exemplary. I'm excited to see what the next phase is gonna be. Lastly, Mayor, a favor to ask of you. Would it be possible for council, given the progress of the Deer Path Community Park project, would it be feasible for Director Thomas, council as a whole, to possibly tour that, that site midway through to see how we've progressed? I know it, there was a tremendous amount of community discussion that went into that. All I've done is drive by it, and I don't want to stick my nose where it doesn't belong. Would it be feasible for us to collectively get a tour of that site and, and the progress that's been attained so far?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Do you have the balance of my time?
Yeah.
We can coordinate that at the staff level. As we've done with other prior tours, we do need to have public postings, given that we'd have a quorum in the council, and likely, city business would be discussed in the context of the status of the project, but we'll coordinate with everyone's schedules and get that on the calendar.
Okay. Any more comments? No. Very good. Okay. So now, I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn into executive session pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 parentheses C comma 1, for the purpose of discussing the hiring, performance, and compensation of city employees. May I please have a motion to adjourn into executive session?
Please.
May I? And a roll call vote, please.
Alderman Gashgarian.
Aye.
Alderman Weber.
Aye.
Alderman Walder.
Aye.
Alderman Novit.
Aye.
Alderman Waldak.
Aye.
Alderman Notes.
Aye.
Alderman Powers.
Aye.
Alderman Preschlack.
Aye.
Eight yea, zero nay. Motion carries.
Excellent. There will be no further business following the executive session. Thank you all for coming.